It is six P M and I will call the August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting of with county board supervisor. We do have a call with all members except for Mr. President. If you would, or tonight we have Pastor Michael Oback from Woodfield, First Assembly God to provide the indication. If you would, please stand or please stand.
That is great. Dear Heavenly Father, God, we come before you today to say thank you for this opportunity to meet again. God, we ask tonight that God you would be here, you would be present, and that Holy Spirit would give God and some wisdom and all the business at hand. Father, we pray that you would bless this town this evening and that all things will bring you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with light of new justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is always citizens' time. We do not have anybody signed up for citizens' time, so we'll move into the public hearing. Mr. Perry, if you will be the public hearing in the interest of the record.
With County Board Supervisor called a public hearing to give citizens serve our with county public water system operating common proposed rate change and according to the code of January fifteen point two dash twenty-one nineteen and subsequent provisions, with county water supervisors proposes to change the rates charged for water services as follows. I will not read the entire chart unless you want me to. Mr. Chairman, I will note that this is a five percent increase in the proposed rates.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, move on to the public hearing, citizens' time. We do not have anybody signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment period of the public hearing. Does anybody have anything to add to the proposed rating rates? All right, here then, I'll close the hearing. Move on to pay their invoices. Have any questions you have received, paid or copied the invoices, anyone who paid? I'll entertain a motion to pay those invoices. So have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second, have a second question. Is there any questions, comments, or any invoice that he wants to pull out? All right, here then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burden.
Hi.
Uh, 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 so approved. Moving on to our minutes from our previous meeting from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Burden to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Lawson. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? All right, here then, all those will pay for six to five percent. Any opposed? So approved. Mr. Burden, do you have anything under hold?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody else have anything? All right, we'll move into new business. We have the settlement resolution twenty twenty-five, page thirty-one, Mr. Perry, Mr. Hankins, Mr. Yaw, someone has that.
I'll actually defer to Mr. Farthing, County Attorney, for any comments he may make on this, but basically our council that has helped us with all these has provided, with all these reports that have run into that to us and recommended, provided this resolution, recommend that we adopt this resolution.
Mr. Farthing, do you have anything to answer?
I do not have anything to add other than, you know, like Stephen said, our council preferring us in this master litigation has recommended that we do this in order to get the settlement proceeds, so I would go along with that recommendation.
All right, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve with county resolution twenty twenty-five, page thirty-four, have a motion by Mr. Smith to have a second, second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, here then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry.
Uh, uh.
So approved. Next, we have some appointments. We've had a vacancy occurred on the Social Services Board and Mr. Smith, I believe you have a recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Charlie, I have spoke to Tiffany Lyons and she is willing to serve on the board, so I'll make a motion to help me to get them to support.
And is that Mr. Ricker, is that P L I O who it is, or H L Y O who it is, or P L I O? Okay. Was I reading that? All right, have a motion to appoint this lines with the Y to the D S S Board to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Burden. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, here then, all those will pay for six to five percent. Any opposed? So approved and recommendations on this line. Next, we've got the Southwest Virginia EMS Council Leader, Mr. Hankins, Mr. Burden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request from the Southwest Virginia EMS Council for their, their next year's initiatives. This is a pretty routine matter. They assist us with our EMS business and they try to help us get some funding when those opportunities become available. Just would ask that you authorize a letter of support, but I would note that in future years, we may explore whether there's an opportunity to affiliate with the Western Virginia EMS Council, which is a little more active. And at the conclusion of our current representative's current term, I would ask that you consider appointing Grant Fraser, our EMS chief, as our representative to the council, whichever one we may be a part of. Just would ask for, those are future considerations, but just ask for your approval on the letter of support that's presented to you.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the letter's support. Have a motion by Mr. Lawson to have a second. Second, have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, all those will pay for six to five percent. Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-five, page thirty-two, for land use permit resolution for the Barrett Mill Water Project. Mr. Burden, you have something?
Yeah, you know, I remember you all just did one of these a few months ago for around fifty-two silver project. I tried to see if we could just use one of the same, having got a concrete answer, so I requested we go ahead and adopt this one, but it's basically just us passing by resolution and a little permit figure or anything for this land use permit. So I request the adoption of two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-two for the land use permits for being adopted.
All right, well, if you can direct the request, I'll hear a motion approved. Have a motion by Mr. Ward to have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burden.
Hi.
So approved. Anything else under the new business?
Mr. Chairman, I have one request, just for consideration, if you all would. On page four of the agenda following the public hearing was a resolution for the water rate change. If you all want to consider adopting that resolution.
So I apologize, Mr. Terry.
No problem.
All right, we've got to resolution twenty twenty-five, dash thirty-three, the resolution to increase the water rates by, I believe, here's a five percent. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Have a motion by Mr. Lawson to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Ward. Any questions or discussion on that? Mr. Burden, we were asked, I know we've talked about it in the past board meetings, and we've talked about it this committee, but. The county's not a being to what Southwest Virginia's whole is experienced with eight feet. And it's, we harp our, our, there's a lot of lectures. With that being said, it's, I don't think it's, I just hope people realize that it's not about the county raising rates moving nearly or, you know, trying to build a surplus or anything like that. It's just trying to maintain itself. And that's, that's my description, but I don't believe you or anyone have anything to add. I don't like it, but I understand.
I, I, I think as well, so there's a couple of P of electric increases, pumping increases. It's extremely, I mean, it's a lot of pumping water from the regional water toward coming all the way toward, and we are continuing to undertake projects and there's an increase in debt servicing against this project as well, so it's, but it's getting water. The Barrett Mill Project literally started breaking ground out late Monday of this week. Allison was telling me earlier that some people posted comments on social media last month and were happy that project was starting, that they were needing water, definitely some citizens up in the mountain that need some of that water.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, just because, you know, I've always pushed, been transparent, you know, the past couple of years, especially since twenty nineteen, with the labor market and what it, what it is, what it was, and what it is today, you know, we've had to address some salaries in order to hire people, particularly, because nobody's getting free of work at the county water department. So that's my, that's my take on it. Anybody else have anything to add? All right, we'll do a roll call vote for Mr. Terry.
Hi.
So approved. And thank you, because I totally missed that question, Mr. Burden. See, you may have to remind, where will we be at?
Uh, you're on the board reports now.
Move on to board reports. We've got building grounds.
Yes, Chairman, building ground, I mean, met on all the sections, we had two recommendations. Number one, accept on its industrial contractors change order number two for the rule to treat late bathroom project amount of sixteen thousand two eighty forty water. And did that close the job out?
No, we are still negotiating a final change order with them for all of the electrical work that they had to do during the process.
All right, committee does need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here then, we'll do a roll call vote for Mr. Burden.
Hi.
So approved.
And second, I am, Chairman, on that stack, including the portable crosswalk project up to two million five hundred thousand.
Go ahead and give an explanation because it's face value and shocking, but. The, the portable crosswalk project, we, when we made our application working with PDOTs, estimates on the funding and everything else, we all were very shocked at what their estimates were coming up with, but it was, I believe, a two million one hundred forty-seven thousand dollar estimate for the entire project, engineering and all of that project. Now that they're into the project, started engineering phase of it, they have come back and given us an updated estimate, it's going to cost additional in doing so, and just want to make certain the county is on board with them. Now up to two and a half million, it's an eighty-twenty split. One can give up two and a half million, it may be a hundred percent county is caused we've got to work with them on some other options or things to bring it back up. But they have just asked for confirmation for us to continue and just ask the board go ahead and say, I mean, it's a critical project for safety out there. Unfortunately, there's no longer Burger Express for them to go to out there, but there's still the subway and the food country and all that over there, but we feel like we have no option but to go ahead and proceed with the project, which is one board to be aware of and make certain.
Did they give a down call when it'll be completed?
Um, I can follow up with that. It is still, I want to say it's off the agreement originally, but I'm thinking it's one seven. And that's just off top of my head, so I'll shut up.
Sketches or background, I mean, which side of the light are they moving this time?
There, there is. It is, it is going north on fifty-two and then crossing over on the north side of the light there, and then a sidewalk going across in front of the old Burger Express over to the food country.
So it's going to be for the popular library. It's on opposite sidewalk.
No, it's, it's up on the side of ninety-four.
Just gotta run there and come across there. Revenon will let Burger Express. And then we take and go. If it costs two million, I'll be starting the sidewalk, but I mean, if you.
I'll just go. I mean, we've jokingly said black lights, black outfits and some white paint, we can have crosswalk, but it's, it's a signalization, tie-in with the signalization, it's all of them. But there's a right way to get down through them across sets on the other side, on the Burger Express side, they're coming up with a drainage system in there, it's tricky, it's a right way, it's ramping and all, we've got to get the sidewalk over there. Still far exceeds what we think the cost would be to do now.
So the estimate is two point one?
Estimate is, well, it's two point one four seven and their construction estimate is up to about three hundred thousand dollars or so above in process, but, and then there's contingency on top of that.
And then it's eighty-twenty of that amount? If it goes above that amount, something.
I hate to say this, but if you're going to be on that side of the school side on fifty-two, the children are going to cross the nine four, you're going to have to do something there eventually.
At least, yeah. I was going to say, at least that's a little bit slower traffic.
I was hoping. They have a baby, they put like a sky. These kids love it.
I would suggest a district bridge for that kind of.
Isn't this a project we talked about with PDOTs in here, and they said that there wasn't people that was killed, that they considered absorbing the cost of the project, but this very hard about this one. I thought some people, it's been out seen something, not enough people killed there that produced a good project.
Well, hopefully the eighty-twenty split, the red listing construction cost will go ahead. But I agree with what Mr. Burden said, it's, it's a legal project, it's a safety issue, so. If the county can slide by with twenty percent. All right, committee does need a second. Is there any more questions or discussion on that recommendation? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry was told.
Hi.
So approved. All right, we'll move on to budget committee.
Budget committee, we had a home state of two thousand twenty-five and made the following recommendations, first recommendations, make the following budget amendments and appropriations as shown on the chart.
All right, committee does need a second. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burden.
Hi.
So approved.
Authorize the staff to excel in the Johnson Controls Quote for installing car key access door locks on the EMS vehicles that lead months and will retrieve and amend an appropriate fifty thousand dollars to account nine thousand dash four seven zero two six one for emergency services capital projects to cover the project cost.
All right, again, part of the recommendation from the committee. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry.
Hi.
So approved.
Approve an amendment of nine thousand dash four seven zero two three eight budget line into the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for additional funding for the fire springs required for the proper.
Any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Yeah, the fresh truck, not only, I'm assuming that's what I read, not only the fresh truck, what was the cost of?
We actually had the price one out for, for them, they've just given us notice that their, their brush truck will probably be the next one that needs to be replaced, but the one they have is still functional.
And just in the budget, we have five hundred thousand dollars on the truck this year. That was what we put in additional to make it six hundred, which will cover the cost of what Matt and Chuck and Chiefs did of all, but they haven't come up with.
And this is just for clarification, we had originally looked at getting some, or looked at some used trucks, couldn't find one that, that met the quality of specifications, so this is a brand new truck. All right.
This one has, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this one has an expected delivery of about six months after the order's put in.
That's pretty quick.
It is. Contractually, it says ninety days after delivery of chassis, so however long it takes the chassis to be delivered to the manufacturer, they expect to finish in about three months.
All right, any more questions? All right, we'll do a roll call vote for Mr. Burden.
Hi.
So approved.
Recommend staff to proceed with forest man services for the implementation of health savings account, provide an additional supplement plans.
All right, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, we'll do a roll call vote for Mr. Terry.
Hi.
So approved.
Schedule public hearing on September ninth for, for the amendment to the solar revenue share ordinance, this update ordinance to include battery and restore systems and provide a bill on that one.
All right, any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, we'll do a roll call vote for Mr. Burden.
Hi.
So approved.
And now I'll just comment on that solar or the revenue sharing ordinance. Mr. Hankins, Mr. Farthing, and myself met this morning and talked about it. We have some revisions to make on what's in there. We still need to go ahead and set the public hearing with them, will be a couple revisions just to get this thing finalized, but we'll try to get it to possibly set up in an amendment to take up the other two and just have this in order, so you don't have to go through ordinance and amendment and amendment to just make this restricted, but we will get it advertised and such.
All right, we'll move on to board member town. Mr. Burden.
Yes, Chairman, maybe, um, we give an explanation, I know we sent out something on the water rate increase. I got a little, I'm kind of over that. We, you know, more detail, if not, it adds to the total increase, I don't know that possible off that. And that's all right.
All right, Mr. Lawson.
Um, I don't have anything besides about the county thing, which was very nice, because to all the staff, I had so much to do, all of them, thanks, but I'll leave you out, but Mr. Catherine definitely seemed out. He is a great cook and he worked so hard that day, but it was really good to know. I appreciate everyone.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Uh, go thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Burden, we get any information back before they went in and looked at the issues on the yard or the rocks? Is that where they come back to the second time? Are they going to clean those rocks up as in the yard on fifty-two?
They have looked at, they don't think grass is grown yet, they were removing the rocks that were supposed to be in there, pretending to monitor it. They've got a year warranty to come back and do any, any work for any other place. If they get any complaints, tell them to, we let you know in a letter, our water department will get them out there.
Good thing. The last thing I got on the Barrett Mill project, it mentions Swick or Wheel, is that coming through from Hanks Mill or is that coming through from Barrett Mill?
Runs from twenty-one from Barrett Mill all the way down here to the bridge. We get it two ways, basically. It runs out on coming down Barrett Mill and runs over on Lookout Drive and some of those roads up there.
Blackberry.
And it comes, ties over to Blackberry and that area is also there.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I've seen Swick or Wheel and I don't even see what people ask for water.
Well, if you'd like, we'll, we'll get a map sent out to you and, and in fact, Allison and I talked today, we'll try to get something out on the public, just to let them know this is where the construction area, this is where the water is going.
That's all.
When you said with the wheel, I mean, I do have one more thing. I'll look for wheel road between five oh three and six twenty-two, there needs to be some patching done. There was patch, but I think it's not fouled.
About three and six oh two.
Five oh three and six twenty-two. Glad you mentioned it.
All right, Mr. Ward.
I have a quick thanks, Mr. Chairman. The auditor report that we saw, those are all been fixed.
You're talking about the auditor report, the constitutional officers that we had in the last info package. The constitutional officer would need to be the ones to answer that. I can set up a meeting with them if you'd like, if you want to have them come here, however you like to address this.
We haven't brought this up yet, but I've got a complaint about broadband on Cuthbert Mill Road. I know we've been talking about that a bunch, apparently it will be more delays. Where do we go from here?
Just hold it off.
Okay.
We'll, we'll circle back to that here.
The other thing is, it's kind of an unusual deal, but I want to commend the town control people. When we were in, they got a phone call, somebody had trapped a skunk, and they were asking for somebody to kind of do something with the skunk. They had to hold somebody and they went and took care of the skunk. I commend the town control people for that.
That was Officer Sharon Dolly. We don't normally do that sort of thing, but because of the circumstances, we, we elected to send someone out. Usually we don't deal with wildlife, but in this case, it seemed to merit the help.
I guess, oh, is there some kind of, a grant being applied for for the state of Fire Department?
Not right now.
I was asked about it the other day.
Wildling here, there, there's an, I have to say it, no mic.
Do you have a yes motion?
There's an opportunity for wildling here from the Virginia, I think Department of Forestry, but I had sent out, and I believe they were interested in mine, but we just haven't done it yet. I believe it's due by the end of this month.
I sent a follow-up with them and told them there was still a problem with that transition, because they had not heard back, I'll follow up. And I'm, Mr. Chairman, you can address it, and that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terry. I got two things. First of all, I just wanted to thank Ms. Williams for putting me through the Baco Awards. You know, we, we won the best overall county achievement award, and tell me if I'm messing it up, for transitioning the Apex Center into the Apache Energy Red and Hockey Venue slash other venue and that. other than being venue and and that, and gun show there this weekend, other than being Mr. Smith quit Saturday, it was it was absolutely packed, it was well ranked, it was well organized, um, so Jimmy and Jimmy's people, um, are doing good work up there, and I look forward to seeing it continue to grow, um, and we also, uh, won an award, not even what it's named for, um, what we done for for nature park, um, with the the new playground, and it's still not done yet, so, um, we ought to, when you sit up here, don't get too many kudos, um, but, uh, you know, I think that was well judged and and well deserved, um, we didn't do it by ourselves, we did it by listening to the citizens, you know, citizens, like, when it's parked out there, you know, it's not inclusive for for all kids, and we took that, I hate Mr. Cook's not here, because I, it's good, a big part of that, too, um, it's a nice playground and wood playground, but that's still one of my big shocks, that on the board, what, you know, how much playground equipment costs, um, that's positive here today. Um, I attended the Mount Rogers Planning District meeting last week, and we were informed that the broadband project with with county, which, um, Mount Rogers Planning District submitted a grant application, they were awarded the grant application to manage the project, it was awarded to Point Broadband, which, and our last, or the last time they appeared to, before this board, you know, they told us that there was some delays on the eastern end of county, um, they were working through it, well, apparently, they have decided that, uh, they can't complete the project. So this project has been passed on to citizens broadband, or citizens internet, whatever it's called, um, and it's going to cause a a delay for the the citizens, um, on eastern end of county. Uh, I express my displeasure because I know at least three times that I brought concerns up through Mount Rogers Planning District about the Point Broadband project and their performance and their execution and making deadlines. And then this got dropped on us last week, I was not happy, and it doesn't affect people in county, but affects the county citizens. So to answer Mr. Ward's concerns and complaints, that's where we're at.
So, Mr. Ryer, um, I mean, we're we're getting beat up on the eastern end, right? I mean, everywhere you go, people are asking when we get in, when we get out, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to have been completed by the end of this year, I understand, is that correct, Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir, um, the last meeting that Stephen and I had with, um, Citizens Co-op, um, but it was a phone call, and they told us that they were applying, essentially, they they had to apply to take over the project from Point Point Broadband, and that they were still probably going to be held to the same deadlines, um, I haven't heard that their paperwork has been approved by DHCD, and and so, as far as we know, they still have a November deadline to finish this project, unless DHCD grants them an extension, but there's federal money involved in this project that has to be extended, I believe, by twenty twenty six, so we we are right up against it, and I think it's been a pretty long time already.
Yeah, you know, and I know they knew ahead of time what the timeline was, it's not like the timeline changes. Um, and a little bit disappointed, a little bit disappointed with the Mount Rogers Planning, right, so, and that will prove. The issue is, is now there's going to be delays, because citizens cable is going to have to get, not only get approved, but they get over, but they're going to have to get preventing from, uh, AEP, B-Dot, all have to do this stuff, these citizens just were told that it was going to be there at the end of year, I think, in my opinion, you know, it's just me, and there's seven other people sitting up here. But I think the Mount Rogers, they their representatives need to be here explaining for the law to drop. I mean, I know we can we can vent to to you, Stephen, and you might, but that's, those people need to be here in front of us, and the citizens need to hear it coming from them, or stuff. Well, they, as Mr. Chairman says, they were awarded, will be in, they got the grant, we didn't. Point Broadband gone in here, but last time I was in here, they said the delays was because there was more squirrels on the eastern end of the county than there were on western. Which, I thought that was a joke to begin with. Anyway, I mean, somebody needs to come here, express, talk about what the real issue is of citizens here. Because all of us, I don't know, but I can't speak for Jesse, it's obvious, that's your worries or complaints, but we're getting roughed up on it, you you can't even go anywhere in town or in with county, and people's asking for, you promised us, but we kind of did, but it was really not a lot of your problems. So, I mean, that's that's just my opinion, I'll I'll go with you.
Well, and 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 I'll just tell you, when I said, uh, um, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of good comes out of Mount Rogers Planning District. Uh, a lot of good projects, but I I told them straight up, I mean, that I really felt like they they built the citizens with that. And, um, I grew a lot, I issued their payment, that had implications, and I'm still a lot about it, and it's not even mine in the camp. Um, but I, you know, going back to, you know, your comment, I I told them, um, you know, we we fund this organization with taxpayer money, and you need to come and award me, and and, you know, this form is has been about accountability, so and that's, you know, that's where I'm at, so, you know, I agree with Mr. Smith, I don't know what Mr. Ward and Mr. Terry, they they had concerns, of course, it's Mr. Bert's in county to live, but, um, I I would like to schedule to put that on my table.
And what I will do, I'll contact, uh, like, have Nick be, the same as possible, about that, Mr. Side, I'll get two things, one, explanation for it, as, but number two, any type of timeframe, if they can give us from citizens as well.
Well, we and and we need a, we need a a true timeframe, because honestly, since this project started, I I don't think we've had a truthful timeframe.
I know some of the points I I got was that they expect competition amongst the different providers, and the product range is, and so now they're not wanting to use as much competition, if any, sometimes maybe just a single competition, uh, or a single provider, and then the rates may be higher than what Port Aban is, the question in the county, and that's, and there's a lot of, uh, and I can't say it, we are out the middle a lot of times, and we're passing information on in good faith, um, and we're the ones that said, so.
Well, when we pass information, it comes from Mr. Barry and Mr. Crank, there there's the accountability, when that information falls through, and and that's the the issue that I have, is, you know, we we need somebody to stand up and be accountable, but also, I I feel like the project is getting this bad. And I will say, I'm on Mount Rogers Planning District, and none of this ever been before are executed, which is a whole other concern. But that's all I, that's my dead top, or cheese top, trade market. All right, next on my agenda is closing, under, go to the junior two point.
I I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, um, I thought I might have some information based on some things I got last week. I do not have any grievances with you or discussion unless you want to be an updated project element, I do not need to go to closed session unless you all want.
All right, anything else to come before the board, Mr. Bert?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Just a note that I attended the, uh, Regional Improvement Commission meeting in Abbotton, uh, earlier today, uh, I've been added as a signatory on that that bank account, and we are prepared to disbar our checks sometime in the next couple of weeks, um, it is more than was budgeted, so, um, the per your motion, uh, in previous meeting, does go all toward public safety, so, uh, we we about hit our revenue target when it comes to, um, the public safety revenue for this year.
Give me just a second. Give me just a second, let me know, Dan, because you you normally don't have anything good to say, right?
If we have any, let them know, they can let us know.
Well, say that helps about a hundred thousand dollar fire truck, fifty thousand dollars.
Hey, and it 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 takes him an hour to drive out there, he spent that before he got there. All right, Mr. Farley, you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Ms. Collins? Is anybody else, anything coming forward? All right, Karen, then we'll be adjourned.